The following was recorded in front of a live studio audience at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. This is the United Podcast Network.
The following program is closed captioned for the thinking impaired.
By tomorrow, I will rule the world.
You think he's gone? He's not gone. That's the whole point. He's never gone.
Is this some radical new therapy?
You see?
Can we just skip the show this week like we did last week?
No.
You know what's interesting?
I missed you last week.
Our ratings are through the roof, right?
Yeah.
Nobody even noticed we weren't here last week.
You didn't get any mail?
No.
I noticed.
Quite frankly, I didn't even notice that I wasn't here last week.
I did. I was like, something is off about my entire week.
Can you pull me up just a little? I know I said it was fine, but when the music plays, it kind of changes it.
Oh, yeah, it does.
You were just slamming the door. And that's the extent of my singing. A lot of emails about the opening song, complaints that we cut it off too fast.
I mean, we could just, that could be the whole show.
Right, yeah, let's just play Melvin Taylor for a whole show.
Yeah, Happy Thursday, here's Melvin's songs.
Yeah, go to a Melvin Taylor. If that's what you're looking for, go to a Melvin Taylor concert.
Yeah.
All right, should we start this show?
Yeah, why not?
Get going. I've got so many things to talk about and yet nothing at the same time.
I feel like that's on par.
Yeah, I've got like nine topics that I'd like to kind of touch on, but nothing I really want to delve into. But I guess we can start.
We can start? All right.
All right. Hi, how you guys doing? My name's Tom Duggan here with the paying attention podcast. Higher top two guys smoke shop at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. I got an email this week. Someone said, I don't know what you mean when you say higher top two guys smoke shop. Can you explain that to me? And I always forget that there are people out there who are just not that bright. Or maybe it's not that they're not bright, maybe it's just that they don't, they're not from around here or something. Maybe, who knows, maybe the person's from like Canada or something. And we were looking at all our, all our, um, our ratings of where people watch this show from, which is just crazy. But I forgot, what point was I making? So, yeah.
Higher top two guys.
Yeah, so they were like, well, so what that means is downstairs from where we, where we tape is Two Guys Smoke Shop. And if you're driving down 28 in Salem, New Hampshire, or driving up 28 Salem, New Hampshire, you can't miss Two Guys Smoke Shop. It's like a landmark. So that's why we like to say that the studio, that Studio 21 Podcast Cafe is higher top two guys smoke shop. Ratings, by the way, I was looking at some of those numbers last night because I had a little extra time, uh, like three in the morning. And I'm waiting for something to download and they said, no, you could take a look at what those numbers are. Chrissy says they're pretty good. What the hell is that all about?
I, people were interested in what you had to say last month.
Crap, we like quadrupled our ratings.
Yeah.
Or quintupled. I don't even know.
I don't even know the number, the term.
You have to make up a number at that point, right? And then I got the breakdown of like where people watch the show from, which is really interesting.
Isn't it?
People in England, people in Saudi Arabia, people, and then we'll get like the regional breakdown. We get a lot of people in like Florida and New York and California. So I think, um, like when we do a big story in the Valley Patriot and then we look at our analytics on the story and that happens, we have a lot of people from around the globe paying attention. It's usually like veterans who are stationed somewhere, but they're from around here. But I don't think that's the case yet. We don't really, I mean, we talk about veterans, but not a lot. We saturate the Valley Patriot with veteran content, but the show is really more about like politics and news of the day. So I have no explanation for it, but for whatever, whatever reason it is that people are tuning in, especially, I guess our best ratings are on iHeartRadio. I love that.
I found that very interesting, too.
That was fascinating because I don't push iHeartRadio. I always push Podbean, but now I'm going to stop pushing iHeartRadio.
And the number one for everyone else is generally iTunes. So I was comparing that to the other shows that we do here at the studio.
Yeah, those, the numbers are crazy.
Yeah.
Like whatever. And on top of that, we haven't even been doing watch parties.
I know.
Facebook got rid of watch parties, but we can still do them, but we have to like individually upload the video every time we do what we're calling a watch party, as if it's running live. And that takes a lot of work. So for the last three weeks, quite frankly, I didn't even like the last three shows that we did. So I didn't repost them. I didn't re-watch party them, whatever word you want to use for that. And somehow our, our, our ratings are like 10 times or eight times higher than they normally are.
I know.
Don't get it, but there it is. So let's start with, I want to do a couple of local things, but first I want to talk about the big announcement yesterday. My good friend, well, I don't know if I should say he's my good friend anymore.
Uh-oh.
I mean, I say he's my friend. He's a friend, but like since he's become governor, at least in the last three years that he's been governor, not really very responsive. Like, you know, I'll shoot him a message and say, hey, you want to have coffee when you're going to be in the area, whatever. And prior to the last two or three years, he was always like, yeah, hey, Tom, I'm, um, I'm not, I'm not busy on the 19th. How about the 19th at 1:00 or whatever? And then, you know, we'd have coffee and chat about stuff and, because we were friends before he was governor, but the last three years, not really so much. So the big announcement yesterday that my friend Charlie Baker is not running for reelection. Let me tell you how catastrophic that is for Massachusetts. I want you to save the tape of this show. It is, what is it? Uh, December 2nd, 2021. I want you to save this show. And remember when I told you how absolutely catastrophic that is for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? There is literally one person on the planet that has stopped the defund the police movement from taking hold in Massachusetts, and that's Charlie Baker. There's only one person on the planet that has stopped all these left-wing lunatics that want total socialism, speech control, uh, total welfare state, uh, hate the police, teaching white privilege in the schools, anti-white racism. There's only one person, and I say this, in fact, we had the Tea Party people here like about six months ago, and they were ragging on Charlie Baker. And I was like, listen, I don't disagree with anything you say about what Charlie Baker has done wrong. However, he's the only guy stopping the Ayanna Pressleys and the Elizabeth Warrens of the world from taking over the entire state. And why is that a bad thing? Well, let's just think about Lawrence, because I always say, whenever you have any kind of issue at all, always look at the local level and Lawrence is a great microcosm of what's going to happen in the state. The crime in Lawrence is going down. I'm going to say that again. The crime, especially the violent crime, is going down. Because locally, the police department has been working very effectively with the city council and the mayor to develop effective strategies to stop people on the streets either from committing crime or committing more crimes once we catch them. Charlie Baker leaving as governor means that there's like a 90% chance that Democrats are going to take over the State House. And then if you thought Deval Patrick was bad, Deval Patrick wasn't quite woke enough for these clowns on the left. The Ayanna Pressleys, the Mara Heelys of the world, the, the Elizabeth Warrens of the world, uh, that new, that new lady that just got elected mayor of Boston. They want to defund police. They want to preach racism. They want to tax you to death. Remember the gas tax? All the big fights that we had in Massachusetts over the gas tax. It went in the ballot and it won, but then they did it, but then they rescinded it. That, none of that's going to happen. The new governor is going to come in, it's going to be a Democrat, and then you're going to like raise the gas tax $2 a gallon. And if you think things are bad in Massachusetts, though, I look at, just do, do me a favor. Do yourself a favor. Don't believe me. Go online after the show and Google and look at what the economies of the other states are in the rest of the country. And pick the liberal states. Pick liberal states like Massachusetts. Pick New York. Pick California. Pick, uh, New Mexico. Pick Illinois. Pick Michigan. See what the lives of those people are like today with the left wing running their state. Look at the video of downtown Los Angeles where you've got rows and rows and rows of tents and homeless people, the smell of urine, the smell of feces. It's completely overrunning their entire city. That's going to be Lawrence. That's going to be Methuen. That's going to be, uh, Lowell. That's going to be Haverhill if these clowns take over. And so I always tell my, my friends on the, on the right, which to you would be that way, to me would be, I guess, that way. But I always tell my friends on the right, my conservative Tea Party friends, all of whom I agree with them on their opinions, on the issues they're right, on tactics they suck. Because all they've done is go after Charlie Baker for the last three years. They've tried to recruit people to run against him in the primary. Now my good friend Jeff Deal is running in the primary. I hope he wins. I don't think he can, quite frankly, and it pains me to say it. But you're running for governor in Massachusetts and you've got the endorsement of Donald Trump. Those commercials write themselves. I mean, just, just imagine whoever the Democrat nominee is going to be showing pictures of Adolf Hitler next to Jeff Deal, next to Donald Trump. I don't, I don't see any possible way a Republican or anybody wins in Massachusetts with the endorsement of Donald Trump. I just don't. And I don't like having to say that, but it's true. Let's say it's not Jeff Deal. Let's say some other conservative like Bruce Tar, who by the way, I think is probably one of the few people in Massachusetts that could replicate what Charlie Baker has done. He's a, he's a social liberal fiscal conservative. He's just like Charlie Baker on the issues. He's, he's almost like exactly Charlie. If Bruce ran and Bruce, if Bruce ran, he could win. And if he runs and he wins, you could stave off maybe the left-wing lunatics in this, in the state. But honest to God, I don't think he's going to run. And I talked to him a couple of times over the last few days. He's pretty flattered that, you know, that I'm saying to him, listen, you gotta, you really have to give this legitimate thought. Because you don't want the Ayanna Pressleys of the world running the state. You don't want the Deval Patricks running the state. Let's remember all the horrible things that happened under Deval Patrick. Just, just cop killings alone, violence alone. Look at what his parole board did. Remember the governor appoints the parole board. You had this guy Dominic Sinelli, who was sentenced to three life sentences under an ultra-liberal Ducaucus judge, who was given parole under Deval Patrick and two days later shot and killed Officer McGuire on Christmas Eve in Woburn. And I remember that case and I remember, I remember hearing the call go out on the radio and I remember going down and meeting with his family. And it was tragic. It was tragic. I want to cry just thinking about it, that there's a hero police officer in Woburn who's not here anymore because of people like Deval Patrick. And Deval Patrick is like woke light. He's not like, he's not like the Ayanna Pressleys of the world. He's not like the Elizabeth Warrens of the world. He wasn't looking to defund the police, not at least completely. The, the rest of these clowns, they will turn, they will take all of the gains that have happened in Lawrence and it will be completely upside down in under a year. You will have, it will go back to the way it was in the late 90s where it's the OK Corral and there's just shootings every night. Remember when I used to go live on Facebook three years ago? And, uh, during, during two summer nights, there were eight shootings on, I think it was a Monday night. There was eight shootings Monday. And then on Tuesday, there were like nine shootings. And I couldn't keep up. Like I'm at the scene of a shooting. I'm live on Facebook. I'm tweeting things. I'm reporting. I'm posting the pictures. And while I'm there, the scanner is going off that there's two more shootings in two different sections of the city. There were gang wars going on in Lawrence. But of course, that was because Willie Lantigua defunded the police. Willie Lantigua laid off 29 police officers. These people don't want to lay off 29 police officers. These people want to lay off 50 police officers, 80 police officers. So I hope Charlie changes his mind. It doesn't look like he's gonna. I wish he had taken my call the other day and maybe I could have talked him out of it. But he has dropped out of the governor's race and I am absolutely frightened. And I'll tell you what, if the Democrats take over, I, I always said I would never leave North Andover. I love living in North Andover. I, there was another place on the planet I would rather live. But if, if a, if a left-wing lunatic becomes governor of Massachusetts next year, I'm coming to New Hampshire. I'm going to, I'm going to move to Wyndham. I'm going to move to, um, I don't know if I want to be in Salem, but maybe Salem, you know? But I want to be close to the border so I can get into Lawrence when I have to go cover things. But I, I, I'm actually going to have to give some serious thought into moving out of Massachusetts if the left wing takes over. I don't want any part of that. And by the way, if you're a right-thinking person, and I don't mean politically right, I mean just right in the head, if you're a right-thinking person, there's no way you can vote for the Democrat, whoever the Democrat nominee is going to be for the next governor's race. You just can't. Because they're going to screw everything up. And as much, as bad as Charlie Baker was, he was the only thing stopping them. He was the only thing. Because the Democrats controlled the House, they controlled the Senate, they control every single executive branch from auditor to treasurer right down the line. He's literally the only Republican in charge. And he's not even really a Republican. He's really like a conservative Democrat. He's a John Kennedy Democrat. He's what we used to call liberal. Now we call conservative because the liberals have gone so far left that the middle now looks conservative. So anyways, uh, we got that on the, on the state level, on the national level. You know, we've got this COVID Omnicron variant, the Decepticon variant. I'm going to say what I said before, then Neil Perry will distort what I said and throw it in my face later on, but it's a hoax, kids. I'm not saying the variant's a hoax. And I said this before when it was just regular COVID. I said, the hysteria surrounding it is a hoax. What we're being told about it is a hoax. I never say COVID was a hoax. People who like to distort what I say to try and destroy my credibility will say, Duggan said it was a hoax. He said it was a hoax and look, it's real. No, I never said it was a. I said the reaction to it and what we're being told about it and what we're being told to do to mitigate it was absolutely a fucking hoax. It absolutely was and we now know it. Including, I got a 60-day Facebook ban for saying that I believed, all I said was, I believe that this COVID, this COVID virus, the very beginning, came from the lab in Wuhan, China. And I got a 60-day ban on Facebook for it. Now it turns out, guess what? It's true. Do I get my 60 days back? No. I got a 30-day ban too for the Kyle Rittenhouse thing and not getting those back either. So we got this new variant that's coming out of South Africa. And the woman who just, the doctor, the female doctor who discovered the variant, says that nobody's getting sick, nobody's dying, you know, people getting sniffles. Uh, there's a few cases that are, you know, minor to severe. And then you put on CNN and it's nuclear devastation. The, the nuclear COVID virance. We have to lock everything down. They're interviewing every politician they can to talk about lockdowns and, and talk about why we have to continue wearing masks. My friend Bob works in Boston at a bank, told me that yesterday he got a memo from the president of the bank saying that because of the new COVID variant, everyone now has to go back to wearing masks. What? None of these decisions are being made based on science. It's all politics now. And I heard our feckless president on my way here today say, it's, it's so sad. No joke, no joke, no joke. It's so sad. No joke. I really mean it this time. No joke. It's so sad that the people have politicized the virus. Dude, you're the one that politicized the virus. It's the media and the liberals and the Democrats that are politicizing the virus. They're the ones pushing mandates. They're the ones pushing masks in schools when we don't need them. Think about how absolutely utterly retarded it is that you have to wear a mask, walking through an airport and stay six feet away from people. But then you get into a plane, which is just basically a metal tube. Everybody takes their mask off and you're stuck with, with, in, in, in that small enclosed space for the next eight to 12 hours wherever you're flying to. Right? It makes no sense whatsoever. They, the people who say follow the science aren't following the science. And I'll give you one more example, which is local, and then we'll go into our Methuen story because it's kind of nice segue in. Don't know if you guys noticed at the last Methuen City Council meeting. People are going to say, oh, you're picking on Neil Perry. You're picking on him. No, I'm just calling it like it is. The guy that sat on this show and says, on his own show, and says on social media, and has said at public meetings, how important it is to get a vaccine and you have to wear a mask. And he mandated masks at City Hall for a long time. And he has no objection to Desi, the State Department of Education. He has no objection to them forcing children to wear masks at school every day. Masks and vaccines, just listen to Dr. Fauci and shut up. Just obey. This guy's a god. Everything he says is great. It's awesome. It's perfect. And then at the last city council meeting, he takes off his mask while he's talking and is coughing and spitting and hacking with poor Consulate Yuna Ziegler sitting next to him. And what's funny is five minutes before that happened, I'm watching Jessica talk and she's, you can't hear a word she's saying because she's wearing a mask. And I'm sitting there, we got a bunch of people in the office and I'm like, look, look at that idiot. She's wearing a mask. She's fine. She's, she's far away enough from people. She's not going to contract anything. And then five minutes later, they go over to Neil, who's sitting next to Consulate Ziegler, and he pulls his mask down and he starts coughing into his hand, not his elbow, by the way. You know, the guy that loves science, coughing, not into his elbow, coughing into his hand, touching the microphone, spitting on the microphone while he's coughing. And I feel bad that he's sick. I do. I said a prayer for him last night. I don't want anything bad to happen to the guy. I may not, I may not be happy with him on a, on a personal level, but politically, he's doing a good job as mayor. He is a good mayor. Overall, he's actually a pretty great mayor. However, you got to walk the walk, my friend. I mean, if you're going to be the one preaching and you're going to be calling people like me out for things that you think I do wrong, even though that's kind of not your job, then you need to be walking the walk. And I, and I couldn't, after he did it the first time, I thought, okay, he'll catch himself and he didn't. And three minutes later, his mask is still hanging from his ear. He's still coughing up a storm. And then I find out yesterday or the day before that there has been a COVID outbreak in Methuen City Hall. Wow. I mean, who could have seen that coming? I mean, hello, can you do me a favor, honey? I dropped my lighter and I'm dying for a cigarette. It's like, great. Oh, God bless you. So this is not so much to pick on Neil Perry, although that does make it fun, right? Because of, you know, what's, what's been going on. But it also, it becomes, I'm always a 30,000-foot view guy. A lot of people get mired down in the, in the, in the weeds on the, on the examples and the, and the people's names that I bring up. You were just being mean to Perry because of this. You being mean to that one because of that. No, I'm trying to have a broader, a broader discussion. And that is, the people who are preaching to you about science are the people who don't follow the science themselves. And Neil is a perfect example, as is Dr. Fauci, as is the governor of Michigan, as is the, uh, governor of California, as is the mayor of, of Washington DC. They've, as is Nancy Pelosi, shutting things down and sneaking into her hair salon, not wearing a mask. And so why do I bring this up? It's not to kick Neil in the teeth, although that is fun. It, it's more to show you guys that the people who are in charge of our government really don't know anything. And they don't really care to know anything. They just care about power. They care about being the one to tell you what to do. And because they're so important, they're elected, they're appointed, whatever position that they have, they don't have to follow the rules that you follow. I mean, imagine the guy that sat here and berated me for 20 minutes over masks and how important they were, sitting in a council meeting, not wearing his mask while he's coughing. Like if he felt good, that'd be, that'd be fine. Like if he pulled his mask off to have a discussion and he wasn't coughing and he wasn't sick, I might give him a hard time if I bumped into him, but I wouldn't make a federal case out of it. But he was sick. And now we find out a week later that there's a COVID outbreak in City Hall, which is weird because I kind of thought all the people in City Hall were, what's the word? Vaccinated. That's right. So you can get COVID even if you have the vaccine. Then why do I need to get the vaccine? If you've had the vaccine, you can get COVID. That's all been proven now, right? Then, then why do I need a vaccine? You can spread COVID if you've had the vaccine. Right? You can get COVID on you. You can get it into your nasal passages, whatever. Maybe, maybe it won't make you sick. Maybe it will if you're vaccinated, but you can still give it to other people. So who are all these morons running around pointing at people saying, you're not vaccinated, you're hurting other people? It has nothing to do with other people. It has to do with bullies. You always know in a crisis who the petty tyrants are among us. They're the ones that immediately seize power without telling you what to do. Regardless of the science, they'll say, you're going to do this because it's the science. And I don't, I don't, I don't know where we came in this country, where, how we got to this point, where if somebody just says, well, if you eat that lump of shit, it's going to be good for you. It's the science. And people will go, oh, okay, I'll just eat the lump of shit. Just because someone says it's the science? Go look at the, go look at the, the mask studies that have been done. I think it was done in Philadelphia, but I could be wrong about the, about the city. The mask, for, there's, there's at least 10 to 15 years of studies on masks and whether or not they stop the spread of, of a coronavirus, whether it's this one or other coronaviruses like SARS. They don't work. Period. They don't work. They just don't. So why are we being forced? Why are children being tortured in school? Why? Because the petty tyrants among us need to seize power. They need to show that they're the ones in control. They're the ones ordering people around. They're the ones that are on top of things. So when they come up for reelection, you'll vote for them because they were the ones that took charge. And really, it's all just smoke and mirrors. It's all just performance art, all of it. Uh, if there was, if there was a serious variant that was killing people that was more deadly than the last COVID, believe me when I tell you, we'd already be locked down. We would already, the schools would already be shut. Methuen City Hall would already be shut. The State House in Boston, which is still shut to the public, but open for the legislators, would be continued completely shut down. Okay, speaking of Methuen, I've got a clip here from about two or three weeks ago, and it involves the structure at the rail trail in Methuen. I thought this was really fascinating, especially given, you know, I'm going to give Steve Saber kudos in this a little bit because he's right. Unfortunately, he's kind of like John Kerry. He's right before he was, he was wrong before he was right, and now he's kind of wrong again. Let's play this. This has to do with money that's left over in the city. And there's an overhang at the beginning of the rail trail on Railroad Street in Methuen that is owned by Laborers Union Local 175, our good friend, we call him the midget, out of love, Mike Gagliotti. We love him to death. All right, he's a sponsor of the show. We never, we never run anything. He just gives us money. Says, I don't, don't run anything. I'll just give you the money. He buys ads in the paper. He's a good friend. He, he helps all the candidates that I ask him to help. His organization, Laborers Union Local 175, owns that building and owns the overhang. Now let's remember, two years ago, while Mayor Perry was still, was mayor, he'd just come on board, the mayor, I believe, submitted a proposal to use some kind of city money from the rail trail to rip the overhang down because it has been deemed not safe. Now, I'm not sure who deemed it not safe, because when I go over there, there's no X from the Inspection Services Department. There's no paperwork to prove that it's unsafe, but they said it was unsafe. Okay, let's just take them at their word. We have no choice. Steve Saber and Jim McCarty went apoplectic that they were going to be using money from the city to tear down this overhang because it was on quote, private property because it's owned by the laborers union. And because Steve Saber and Jim McCarty went apoplectic because they don't like the laborers union and they don't like the guy who runs the laborers union, they didn't want to spend city money to tear it down, even though it's a historical situation. And then two weeks ago, this very bizarre conversation occurred at the, at the Methuen City Council meeting.
Do we have an update on the audit for the COVID money that's going on? Do you have any updates on that?
Oh, that's not it.
We haven't spent any.
The, uh,
Well, maybe it's right after.
It's right after this, I believe.
The original money, yes.
Well, we gave you everything we had.
No, you said that the state requested some more information.
Oh, yeah. So we, we provided them the additional information. We, we haven't heard back.
You haven't heard anything back yet? Okay. All right. And also, we have $421,331.76 in the rail trail account.
In the what?
In the rail trail account.
Yeah.
That money's been sitting there for a few years now.
Yeah, that's the much debated money over the, uh,
Right, but the, the thought here was that we would, that money can be applied to any recreational
That's correct.
Property. So,
Any park.
I'm sorry?
Any park.
Any park, correct. So we do have some parks that desperately need work. And you know, my concern is that, you know, I found that when I was fighting to renovate the stadium, the city had accepted a grant of $450,000 that they never used and the city lost it. And our group pushed to get a new grant the following year, but
Yep.
what we were getting pushback from at the state level was that, you know, the city applies or gets a grant, they don't spend it. So why are you coming back looking for more money? So we've had this money sitting in this account now for about three or four years.
Yeah, predates me.
Yeah, but I think that it's time to use it. We have a lot of desperate needs.
Well, so we had made a decision to use it on Burnham Road.
Right.
And then, uh, during public participation, some citizens asked the council to consider the rail trail again. So we just held back, make sure.
But that was, I'm bringing that up next. Uh, that was a couple of weeks ago that some citizens did that. But again, this money's been sitting there for several years.
Several years.
And when you first got in, I know that there's a plan to renovate the Burnham Road, the softball field, because the high school team uses that. And it's not in a very good condition for a high school softball field. We also have needs for lights in the center field at the stadium, center field. So, um, but my other concern, Mayor, is that, you know, hopefully we're not holding it for that issue, but if we are, we should have that discussion on the depot building. You know, we went there, we discussed that in detail back then, but the depot building, uh,
And you voted no.
privately owned. And that is a historic treasure for this community. And, um, it needs to be dealt with because something's going to happen to that building and everyone's going to be pointing the finger at each other.
Yep.
But somewhere along the line, just like any other owner of historic property, we have a historic commission that's under your oversight. And have they done anything? We also have a historic district committee, commission. And have they done anything with the owners of this building? Because the people that bought this building knew that they were buying a historic building.
Yeah.
So this overhang, which we did get a legal opinion, uh, and this overhang is in deplorable condition and rather dangerous and it needs to be
Thanks to you.
Yep. But, you know, again, now we're going to have the discussion all over again.
I'm not going to debate a political issue with you because you got to, you
It's not a political issue.
When you bring up the historic commission and historic district, you're going for politics.
So let's, Mayor, what is their function? Is their function to oversee and protect the history of the city?
Right.
Is that their function? I don't think there's politics involved.
Right.
We have a historic commission
Yeah.
who I believe their function is to protect the history of the city.
Right.
The city has lost too much history. The city has lost too much history through the years.
True.
Okay, so we have another piece of history.
If this council tonight says, "Spend that money..."
You can cut that. So here's what's bizarre about this. So on the one hand, Steve Saber's right, and the mayor was kinda wrong, when he said, "Oh, this is political," like, he's so programmed to like not deal with certain things if it involves, like, if you say historic commission, "Oh, his brain fries, oh, that's political", right? Just like when I said something about the Democrats were for white supremacy training in the schools, "You said Democrats!", and he just stops listening. I hate to come on this show ever and say Steve Saber's right about anything, but he is, he's right. Unfortunately, he's right after he was wrong. The reason why this is still not done is because he voted against it. Him and Jim McCarty in the city council had a chance two years ago to spend this money to either fix the overhang or to take it down. And they voted no! They voted no, not to quote Elizabeth Warren, they voted no. And now here he is saying, you know, "I'm very concerned about this, I'm very concerned that the city has had all this time and hasn't done anything." You know, not for anything, right? Like, it's not a political issue just because he brings up the historical commission. And normally, he is the guy that's throwing little political jabs, that if you don't know the context, you think it's kind of ambiguous, but he's actually giving a jab. I don't think that's the case here. I think maybe he's changed his mind on spending money on the overhang, because God forbid, and again, we have no proof that it's actually not safe, but let's say that it's not safe. If somebody tomorrow goes walking under that overhang and a piece of steel falls on them and hurts them in any way, these videotapes from public meetings are gonna be the first exhibit in a trial in a lawsuit against the city. That they knew that this was not safe, they knew two years ago that this was not safe, they voted two years ago not to spend the money to fix it or tear it down, and now here we are, two years later. So the mayor always, he pulls this, well, you know, he knows better, that they can't just vote on something without it being a... He's, "Well, if you wanna take a vote right now, you could take a vote right now." No, they can't, Saber's right about that too. You can't just take a vote right now if it's not on the agenda, it's not properly, hasn't been properly posted, the public hasn't had notice, can't just take a vote on any issue you want at a public meeting. But again, let's go back to why it's the way that it is, it's the way that it is because one of the first things Mayor Perry wanted to do when he came on board was to just get that off the table, just take care of it. There's money in the rail trail account, let's use it to either fix up that overhang or let's just tear it down. And then we don't have to worry about safety concerns, we don't have to worry about lawsuits, we don't have to worry about any of that, and they voted no. And now they're all pouting their fists because, you know, they all wanna be mayor. Perry's not running for reelection for a third term, so they're all looking at his job. And as predicted, as predicted before the election, I said, "When this election's over and he's a lame duck, they're gonna start going after him for things that they did wrong." Because they're gonna rail against him to get publicity, so they get their names in the papers, they can get name recognition to run for mayor in another year or two. And that's where we are, that's exactly where we are. You've got this monstrosity, and I know because when I go to pick up my check from the Midget, or if he calls me, they're like, he has sushi sent to his office for lunch, it's unbelievable, I don't even know where he gets it, but it's great. And every once in a while, I'll go, "Hey, you're a sushi guy, why don't you come over tomorrow, I'm having sushi sent over for lunch." And I'll go over to that building over on Railroad Street, and I park my car under that overhang, and I now worry when I'm walking from my car to the building if something's gonna fall on me because I'm hearing from Methuen City Councils that it's not safe. At the same time, they're voting not to fix it, only to have two years later for them to come back and make it kinda look like it's the mayor's job for not doing something. He tried. I mean, I might not like the guy, but he tried. He put it before you and he wanted to fix it and you wouldn't let him. And now, you're kinda trying to make it look like you're blaming him for it. And quite frankly, again, you know, he tries to pull it by saying, "Oh, this is politics, you're playing..." It's not politics, right? I think he's just changed his mind. So my suggestion for Steve Saber, put it on the next agenda, which he didn't do, because we've already had a meeting since this clip, we've already had a meeting. My suggestion to Steve Saber, call the mayor's bluff, the mayor said, "Put it on the agenda right now and you can approve it right now." So call his bluff, put it on the next agenda, and vote to spend the money and fix or tear down the overhang on Railroad Street. Problem solved. But everybody's gotta play games and pretend that they weren't on this side and go over there, it's like watching CNN. You know, they say one thing and then they go to break, and then they come back and they say something that's the exact opposite of what they just said going into the break. And it's the same thing here. Steve Saber, put it on the agenda and get it done. You've been on the city council for four years. Did you get anything done? I mean, you wanna put it on Neil Perry, you didn't get anything done when you had the chance, Jim McCarty didn't step up to the plate when he had a chance. I think Jessica's the only one that voted for it, I think, I'll have to go back and look at the tape, but I think she was literally the only one that said, "I'm really worried about someone getting hurt here," and voted for it two years ago. Wow. Like, that's just total deception. And it's up to the people of Methuen to hold people accountable for these things. Wow, 11 seconds left for the show? Very good, I had like three other things I was gonna get to, but we can save those for next week. Let's talk about, you can roll up, Mel, let's just talk about our sponsors, we love our sponsors, McLennan Real Estate, we love Matt, and I just saw a new thing on housing prices, we're gonna get Matt to come back in because it looks like they're changing. You can roll up, Mel Taylor. McLennan Real Estate, Century 21 on Broadway in Methuen, AFC Urgent Care, Lisa Williams was in with us a couple of weeks ago with her friend Natalia from KM Grill and Pizza and Grill. I've been eating my Dominican food there every Wednesday night, it's awesome, get the chicharrones, go in and say you want the chicharrones, that's what you want. They did amazing job, it's better than Polo Central. Marcin and Son Construction, EIS Investigation and Gun Training. Borelli's Deli where I'm going, I actually have a new thing that I get there now, their roast beef is so fresh, it's actually fresher than if you go to like Harrison's. So I now go in and get like two pounds of roast beef and it's gone in like a couple of days. I'll be getting my Valley Patriot hot sausages too. Tomo and Happy Crab, we appreciate their sponsorship, I'll be dropping by and see Aaron today and having some sushi on my way home.